I have 5:15, we shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we shall, I'll ask for roll call, please. Carolina.
Councilmember Cora.
Yes.
Dolby.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Calverson.
Yes.
Mayor Walters.
Yes. Greetings, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting on October, August, October. I don't want to wish us ahead. I was stalling until Nick got here, that's what I was doing. Um, August 12th, here we go. Uh, we will start once again with Mayor Walters' quote for the day. Today's quote comes from a gentleman by the name of James Cash Penny. James Cash Penny was an American businessman and entrepreneur who founded the J.C. Penny Stores in 1902. I didn't know his name was James Cash, but we all know that now. The quote goes like this. Growth is never by mere chance, it is the result of forces working together. Okay, we shall move on to approval of tonight's agenda, and I will entertain any additions or corrections from the council, and if there are none, we shall, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we have citizens' comments, and I have one individual who would like to approach the council, and Mary Elizabeth, the floor is yours.
Bazanson, 56267. Last month, I came to the council with some concerns about the safety at the Koloran van shell, and I wanted to come to say thank you. I mentioned the windows, and I happened to mention them before the park board meeting the next day, and on Thursday morning, two men in a big truck came with a piece of wood, and they cut the wood and put it over the window that faces my house, which had been uncovered for multiple years. And they cut a piece of wood and covered the window where the sharp teeth window was, and it looks great. It's not painted a solid green color, it's more stained, and I think it looks really good with, excuse me, with the siding of the van shell. They did not take the door down, but I'm certain that Russ has examined the risk and liability of leaving the door there, knowing that a child had been hurt in a previous year. But I just wanted to come to the council and say thanks very much, we got something fixed, yay! Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Good luck, all.
Would anybody else like to approach the council at this time during the citizens' comments portion?
Just clarification, is that different from the public hearing comments?
Yes, it is. All right, in just a few moments here, I will open the public hearing. Um, just before we begin with this, I just want to lay down a few ground rules and just a couple of reminders. Uh, first of all, to the city council, uh, once again, we call these public hearings for a reason. Uh, once I open the public hearing, it is our charge to listen, uh, and we won't have any opportunities to, uh, for, or any kind of comments or solicit questions, that type of thing. So our job is to listen during the public hearing portion, uh, and then adhering to our recently adopted, um, rules, if you will, for public hearing comment. We will limit your time to three minutes, and our attorney, Teagan, has been gracious enough to be our timekeeper, so I guess the whole-
We don't have the cards today, though.
Pardon?
We don't have the cards today.
Okay, no cards, you just, uh, we'll have to do like they did in the Gong Show, just kind of Gong 'em, eh, something to that effect, okay. So, anyway, just so you know, just, the whole idea is just to be respectful of everyone's time, okay? Um, and then, of course, if you speak, please come up to the mic, introduce yourself, uh, and we will go. But, uh, the order of, uh, this public hearing tonight, we're gonna start with, uh, Nick from Ellers will go first, and then Samuel, but, uh, are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Anybody unclear of anything? We all know and understand what we're, what we're gonna go with, what we're doing here. Uh, I'll just basically say, generally speaking, what, what, uh, public hearings are all about, uh, is to kind, find a, uh, solution, really, to a common problem. And, of course, tonight, I think this Tiff district speaks to that. Uh, you know, we have a community housing problem, crisis, if you will, before us, so hopefully, at the end of this, uh, public hearing, everybody knows where we're going with that and what our intentions are. That being said, if there's no other questions, I will open the public hearing, and I will ask Nick from Ellers to start us off, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Uh, my name is Nick Anhut, I'm a financial advisor to the city of Morris, and I've been engaged to evaluate this tax increment request and provide an overview of the potential financing tool.
Nick, can I stop you just one second? Counsel, I forgot to tell you, just so everybody knows, that once I close the public hearing, then we will have to take action. There is a resolution there, I just want, so everybody's clear on that. I forgot to mention that, but I think you probably knew that, but just wanted to be clear. All right, off you go, Nick, sorry about that.
Thank you, sorry. Um, so, tax increment financing is a, is a financing tool that cities can use in the state of Minnesota under statute to try to provide assistance to get development off the ground. There are certain types of projects that can qualify, not everything will qualify to be used and developed within a Tiff district, uh, but one of the primary mechanisms is what's called a housing Tiff district, to provide new affordable housing within the community. And essentially, what this tool is doing is it's trying to capture the new taxes that are created from a developed piece of property. So in order for this tool to be effective, you have to take a form of property and actually improve its value, and you improve its value from a taxable standpoint. Um, and so if, just by way of a basic understanding of the property tax system, every year, uh, the assessor looks at, uh, the various property within the city of Morris and assigns a new and updated value to those properties. Sometimes they stay the same, sometimes they can go down as they depreciate value, most of the time, they might go up as they appreciate the value over time. But they do change on an annual basis. So when you create a Tiff district, what you're doing is you're drawing a start and an endpoint. You're creating, uh, a frozen value, so that's the value of the property before it's developed, as it exists right now in the property, and that's getting frozen in the tax base, meaning that it's gonna continue to be a part of the general tax base and contribute to the, uh, the general levies of the city, the county, and the school district for the duration of the Tiff district in the same capacity that it is today. Um, but as the property is developed and it increases in value, and the assessor assigns a new, higher value to that property, um, the property continues to pay taxes, just like any other property of that kind of improved value would, uh, but a portion of the money that's created from that new value gets separately segregated and sent to the city in the form of a Tiff settlement. Um, so it creates a new revenue source that the city can use to then find a way to help assist in financing that project, and in some cases, other needs in the community as well. And so we're creating a new revenue stream that is administered by the city that it can use to help assist in financing the full cost of developing, uh, this, uh, project in particular. And we do have the developer here who will get up and speak after me to give you some overview of the actual project. Um, but fundamentally, we're, we're able to capture the increased value and use that, or lever that, to be able to assist in paying for a cost of that project. Uh, not every tax that gets created, uh, is actually captured within a Tiff district. So the majority of the value is, uh, is captured, but there are certain levies that are exempted from that, and those particular levies impact the school district. So there are operating referenda levies, so these would be levies that have been approved by the voters to assist in operating the school district. The property, as it increases in value, is going to take on a larger share at the expense of those levies, um, and, and fund more of those levies, uh, as it does get developed, because that specific levy is exempted from Tiff districts. However, you know, the city of Morris uses a general levy that it puts in place to fund its operation. The property will contrib, continue to contribute at the level that it was before it was developed, that frozen value that I mentioned, uh, but as that property increases in value and should take on a larger share of the tax base, uh, instead of going to the general levy, the funds that the property is paying in property taxes go to the city's account, instead, the Tiff fund. Um, and then the city finds a way through whatever mechanism, and it could be an agreement with the developer, finds a way to use that revenue stream to help offset a portion of the cost of the project, or take on a, a piece of the mortgage, or some other type of financing for the project. And so what we're here today to discuss is the creation of a Tiff district for this particular housing development that's being proposed within the community, and using this tool to help assist in developing that property. So I think, right now, it would be helpful to bring up the developer and have him give an overview of the project, and then I'd like to actually spend another couple of minutes to talk about the actual financing after that takes place.
That sounds great, Nick, and we have Samuel from Unique Opportunities. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be up here. Uh, thank you, guys, all for coming tonight to participate in the, the conversation about this. Um, really, we're here because, uh, we, we, my family, my company, has some ties to the area we've developed in a lot of communities around here. We're based out of Alexandria, Minnesota, and it's come up a handful of times, we've had some businesses reach out that really said, "Morris needs more housing." And we saw in 2020, 21, 22, around the state, uh, it's really, really, really tight housing markets in the multifamily, uh, scope. It was difficult to find apartments in a lot of communities. Um, there was a fair amount of development over those years, even in outstate Minnesota, and the markets have softened, and, and it's been easier for, uh, people to find housing in a lot of markets. Um, this spring, as we started looking at Morris, we saw that that really wasn't the case, and it is still incredibly tight housing market, uh, for people that are looking for, uh, housing, affordable housing, market rate housing, that they're looking to rent, and especially, really, for people that are looking to rent a nicer, uh, de, maybe a newer development, something that has maybe a washer and dryer in the unit, maybe some heated parking, things like that, wasn't readily available in the market here in Morris. And so, working with, uh, some businessmen in the community, um, having some conversations with the city, we started discussing what a project could look like, and, and that's really why we're here tonight, is to discuss what we've come up with that, that's our best shot at trying to help meet the need of the community of Morris by providing some additional housing. Right now, the, wha, what I would say is probably the only comparable complex, um, it has a few less amenities, but it's relatively new, as like the East Point Village Apartments, um, that were built in 2017. And if you look there, currently, they have no vacancies, and they have no units coming up that are not already re-leased. For a community like this to have its only complex built, that I'm aware of, only larger complex built in the last 10 years, to not even have any upcoming openings, really speaks to how much there's a need for more units in the community. Our specific project is going to be a market rate project that also, because of the Tiff, has 20% of the units that are reserved for people that have, uh, low to moderate income. And in, in a community like this, a lot of times, those will be filled by, um, maybe a single parent that's working, or a family where only one of the parents, um, is, is currently in the workplace. It could be filled by somebody who has more of an entry-level job as they're moving up. There's a lot of different people that could fill that. It could be somebody that's, uh, maybe on SSI, Social Security, something, something like that, that has, uh, uh, maybe a limited income. And so being able to offer a portion of the units that have lower rents is gonna be really, I think, a, a benefit for the community to be able to have those reserved units, as well as having really nice units all the way across the board. Every unit's gonna have a washer and dryer that's high efficiency, that's, that's in it. The whole building will have underground heated parking for anybody that, um, is, is looking for a stall there, uh, that they would like to have. There's an elevator that provides, uh, the flexibility to have handicap-accessible units on every level. Uh, there's amenities in there, like a fitness center, there'll be like a conference library space in there, the, you know, outdoor patio, um, plenty of off-street parking, things like that, I think are really gonna be what helps this community fit the need that, or helps this specific project fit the need that the community currently has. Specifically, when we look at Tiff, I know there's lots of different perspectives, sometimes there can be some misconceptions on it, and the reason that I like Tiff is it doesn't take away from something the city currently has. We're not taking from some funding, this source that the city is currently receiving. We're, we're taking this project, and, and Nick, I'm sure will speak about this, he's reviewed all the finances, even with Tiff, this is a really challenging project. The reason we're able, as a company, to make it work is we're within an hour of our corporate office, so I could have my crews that don't want to travel to different parts of the state work on it, and so we're willing to maybe, maybe sacrifice a little bit of a financial return, because I think the project, uh, makes sense for us as a company, because we would consider this local for us out of Alexandria. And he'll speak, I think, a little bit to why financially Tiff is a needed component to it. But once again, I, the, the point that I always clarify with it is, the dollars coming in are only from what the project generates in tax revenue. If the project doesn't happen, those dollars that we're talking about will never be there anyways, and so I think it's just important to highlight that, that understanding and importance of it. Um, if there's other conversation points or questions that come up, um, if the mayor allows at the end of the public hearing, I'm, I'm happy to answer those too. Um, I'll, I'll defer that, uh, to you guys, but appreciate the opportunity to be here and be a part of the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to put, uh, some context as well, I forgot to mention, when I talked about a housing Tiff district, what the qualifications exactly were, and I'm glad that, uh, he mentioned. Um, so in order to create a Tiff district for a housing project, you have to, uh, somehow be able to demonstrate that it is providing affordability, as mentioned. So at least 20% of the units within this apartment building will need to be set aside or made available for occupancy for individuals or families that meet a certain income requirement. This is defined by statute, and the income requirement ebbs and flows over time. It's, it's based on the median income, really, of the entire state. And so the requirement is that, um, these 20% of the units be set aside for individuals or families that are at, uh, or below 50% of median income. And the published income levels, um, for the state of Minnesota by HUD, uh, this year, so, uh, an individual, this, the equivalent of that would be someone who makes, uh, at or below $36,000. And then it actually grows with the size of the household, so, you know, it can, it can support more, uh, individuals. But a household of four, the equivalent would be $51,500. So just to give some sense of the types of, uh, individuals that he was mentioning, that would be potential renters for this, this type of development. It's a, it's a, you know, fairly, uh, wide spraw, uh, swath, um, and as long as they can demonstrate every year that at least 20% of those units are set aside, then this project can qualify, uh, as a Tiff district, as a housing Tiff district.
I'm sorry, what was the income limits, again?
So, uh, for an individual, this year in 2025, um, it's $36,000.
Okay.
And then, uh, for a family of four, it would be $51,500.
Okay.
Uh, just to give a sense. Um, so it, it is a scale that grows with the size of the household. Uh, but it is a published, um, published by HUD, applicable to the incomes within the state of Minnesota and, and the region.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the Tiff district would only be this property. It would not be any other, uh, adjacent, uh, development that would be captured, so it would just be this property. Uh, we did talk to the assessors and get an estimate of the potential valuation to get, you know, put some, uh, concrete numbers together to evaluate whether or not it would be feasible to use this tool. Um, right now, the property has, next to, it's a vacant property, there's hardly any value associated with it from a tax standpoint. Uh, but when it's developed, it's expected to achieve a valuation of about $5.5 million. So just ballpark equivalent, that's about 1.7% of the tax base of the city. Right, so it's, it's a, it's a decent-sized project. Um, when it's developed, it's anticipated that that property, given current tax rates, uh, would contribute about, or would have to pay $86,000 in annual property taxes. That's a $85,000 increase, so again, it's paying negligible taxes today. Of that $86,000 that's created, uh, about $9,000 of that would be going to the school district in those market value referendum levies that I just mentioned. So there would be, uh, an increase in funding, and, actually, it would provide the same funding, but what it would do is actually decrease everyone else's taxes, because it would come onboard to take a share of that levy, and then the rest of the tax base would have to pay less. Uh, it would still provide the same amount of total funding to the school district, but everyone else's share would go down. The base taxes, as I mentioned, about $500 per year. That would continue to go to fund everything at the, at the city and the county that it, that it currently does, um, and that would continue on through the life of the Tiff district. And so what we're talking about is the ability to harness about $76,530 in new revenue that would be made available every year, uh, into the city's Tiff fund, uh, that can help, uh, provide some kind of funding for this project. And what kind of funding would be, um, best suited to the city is one that's, that's low-risk. It doesn't put any obligation on, on the city to kick in for any kind of shortfalls. And so what's proposed in the financing agreement that was included for the, for the public hearing and the, and the council's consideration after the public hearing is, uh, making a contribution in the form of a pay-as-you-go Tiff note. And that's a, that's a term we use, pay-as-you-go, um, because it describes that we're not making any promises to any specific dollar value that's gonna be paid, um, but what the city will do is if the property gets developed, so if the, if the developer is able to gather all the financing necessary for this project, if they're able to prove out that they spent the money on the things that they said they needed to spend the money, there's a budget of about $10.3 million to develop this, this property and this, this building, and all the parking associated with it. Um, if they prove all that out and increase the value, then they're going to generate new taxes that are gonna be made available within the city's Tiff fund. The city will remit 95% of whatever gets paid in and make that available to help leverage additional mortgage proceeds for the, the development and the financing of the project. So the, the lent, the developer's gonna be able to take that promise from the city that it'll make this resource available. They're able to go to a bank and say, "Look, we've got this agreement with the city," and they'll be able to actually borrow more money, instead of having to kick in equity for that amount, in order to bring down the amount of upfront equity that needs to go in and actually make this project potentially profitable. Right now, a $10.3 million project, given where mortgage rates are at and current underwriting, you'd expect that, without any kind of assistance, the developer would have to provide about 40, maybe even 45% of the total cost of the project in equity upfront. That's a, that's a much higher level than we see in typical real estate development. Um, and so what that means is, if you have to put in more money upfront, that's, that's gonna lower your potential return and not make this investment worthwhile to begin with. So fundamentally, we need to get it to some, to some level that provides some kind of a return to warrant that level of investment. And so what Tiff can do is, instead of having to need, uh, 40% of equity, we're gonna be able to bring that number down, and potentially, because we're able to, to help unlock additional mortgage proceeds, that means the amount of equity that's going in can be closer to 30% or something in that ballpark. Um, and that's gonna make this project a little more feasible. It's still on the low end of, uh, potential returns for typical development that, that I evaluate, uh, but for all the reasons that the developer just mentioned, it, it, there's a lot of things that, uh, also make sense for them, from a business standpoint, to move ahead and, and build this new apartment building. Plus, there is some potential that it could appreciate value in the future, after it demonstrates, you know, success in, in, in actually leasing out and filling up and, uh, and, you know, providing value to its tenants. So, um, that's a, just a basic overview of what's gonna be presented. Um, again, that pay-as-you-go is not a promise that the city would kick in and make any differential in that mortgage, um, just that they're gonna make available that portion of taxes that gets funneled through the city's, city's Tiff fund, make 95% available, and after the developer proves on an annual basis that they're continuing to set aside those units and demonstrate the affordability requirement. Um, and so there's no obligation for any upfront funding from the city. Um, we're just basically deferring some of the benefit of having a new, new development from a tax base standpoint, in order to actually incentivize and get it built in the first place. And then, once everything is done and it's all paid off, um, then the property will revert to the general tax rolls, and now you'll have a new development that's able to help contribute and offset, uh, the taxes for the, the larger community, not just the school referendum. So, that's a premise, on a nutshell. Um, there is a form of agreement that's been prepared by the city's Tiff attorney, um, that would be between the city and the developer. It requires the developer, again, to do all those things I said. They have to raise the capital, invest the level of equity that's necessary, get the mortgage for the property, build and construct this building. They have to reach occupancy and, and get tenants to actually come in and rent, uh, the units. And then, if they do all that successfully and complete the project, then the city will give them what's, a pay-as-you-go Tiff note. It's basically a form of promissory note that says, the city would reimburse them for up to $900,000 of the cost of developing that property. So that $10.3 million budget, the city would be contributing something in the, in the realm of about nine, you know, 9%. And that, that Tiff note would be a, a principal, uh, an interest payable Tiff note, uh, that the city would pay down over time with the increment that's created and made available within the, within the fund. If there's any balance of that left over when the Tiff district expires, the developer has to write that off. Again, they have to make up for any difference in any of the financing that they engage with, with the bank. We're not providing any direct, uh, support in that, in that way. We're not gonna be, um, providing any funding of the city as collateral or anything of that sort. We're just making available this one specific tool, um, and it's only on a pay-as-you-go basis. So as the money actually comes into the account, the developer continues to prove that it's an affordable building, then the city, on an annual basis, will, will make a, a payment from 95% of what comes into the fund and, uh, pay down that balance over time. Uh, if it pays, pays down that balance early, then the city's done and can, uh, decertify the Tiff district, and it, and it comes onto the general tax rolls. Uh, and if it does not, the developer has to write off any of the difference in the shortfall. And then what, what to do with the 5%? So why, why not, you know, 99% or 100%? Well, we do wanna have some, some kind of protection. There is some administrative cost that the city bears in, you know, not only maintaining the fund, but there's some reporting requirements for the state auditor. Uh, every Tiff district created in the state has to submit an annual form to the state auditor's office. They also have to publish the finances within their audited financial statements, so it's all, you know, transparent and available to, for inspection. Um, and so that 5% is basically just to cover some of those administrative costs. If the city chose to, you know, if it built up a balance, it could make a payment to pay down that Tiff note, if it wanted to, but you'd only be obligated to making 95% of it available. I guess I'll pause for there and, and stand by for any questions, maybe listen to the comments and address the questions after that.
Yeah, I think that's probably where we're gonna go next. We'll, uh, open it up now to the public to come up and, uh, if they would like to address the ca, address, uh, please walk up to the microphone. So, yeah, you can take a break, Nick, for just a little bit, and we'll allow, uh, the general public to come up.
James Stoker, from, uh, 466 through 2208th Street, here in Morris. Um, I wanted to say, first of all, that, um, it, it bothers me a lot that the Morris Economic Development Authority and the city council are actually the same body in terms of its makeup, because that means the city council is holding public meetings like this and a lot of very private meetings as a development authority. And that's the real issue here, is that we haven't heard much of anything that's come out in the development authority until tonight. Now, I will point out, uh, since I don't have much time, that the document in front of us, this plan, does not agree with what we just heard. For instance, he quoted a PTC of about $76,000. This claims a PTC of $100,000. This claims a PTC of one hundred twenty-six thousand. That's a huge difference in the amount of money that you're able to collect. And it invalidates this document because it means you can't collect enough to cover what is in this document. So this document's not valid in that way. This document's defective in that it doesn't meet many of the legal requirements for the plan document. For instance, even the findings in appendix C, like finding two, the but-for finding that claims that is basically based on the assertion of the developer without any American support or without any detailed support for why they actually need this money. And even tonight, all we've heard was some vague generalities about percentages of cost and so forth, and those aren't in this document and they are necessary. Likewise, when it comes to the pay-as-you-go, one of the requirements in this document is to tell us what the money is being spent on. And my ultimate problem with the whole TIF scheme is it's not accountable. It's an unaccountable use of public money. And if we don't know what the public money is being used or being spent on, that's a really big problem. That's government waste. Thanks.
My name is Annette Watson, one fifteen South Atlantic Avenue. And when I speak, I know that I am in the minority opinion, but I believe that all of we that are in this room, that we're for the economic development of our town. We want a city budget that meets our needs and allows us to save a little for a rainy day. We want to run public facilities that are healthy. We want our commerce to thrive and we want a city budget that can solve ongoing problems like flooding and sewers, snow removal, et cetera. As for me, I would love to see our town be self-sufficient. If we get a grant, we are thankful for the grant, but we are not desperate for it. To do this, we cannot overextend ourselves. My minority opinion is that God's word provides the principles for government, particularly in Romans thirteen. Government acts as God's authority on earth, meeting out judgment to those who break the law. The Bible teaches that citizens pay taxes and revenue to whom it is due so that they, so that they, the government, can do their job of providing security, not plunder, but security. Neither the Bible nor the founding fathers prescribed a government that takes from one person and gives to another. A TIF does just that. It takes from some and benefits some others. A TIF is discriminatory and I support a free economy. When WBEZ Chicago evaluated TIFs, they listed four critiques of TIFs and their abuses. One, because TIFs are granted from the top down, this discriminatory TIF is often called a shadow budget or the mayor's slush fund for patronage. Second, since TIFs are more profitable, in downtown areas, the outside areas feel discriminated against. Third, TIFs by their nature keep the city from their normal tax receipts, which often leads to non-TIF areas facing increased taxes during the lifetime of the TIF. The fourth critique is that the public does not benefit enough from the TIF. In fact, the city cannot guarantee that the builder will continue building or be in business. So yes, there are development agreements, but no, there's not really a system for enforcement. We want economic growth, but does our city fear the loss of our own state aid? As I have seen the concern over this year of we're losing our funding, this means we are not in a healthy position. So I don't consider a TIF a way to increase our economic growth. As I mentioned before, I don't consider this TIF, portion of town is being blighted, nor do I consider an established building firm to be, to build but for having a TIF. In the principles of a free economy, that business can choose to modify its building plan in order to build something that it has finances for. Luke fourteen eighteen says, "For which you are intending to, for who is intending to build a tower, siteth not down first, counteth the cost, and whether he have sufficient fund to finish it," not whether the government has sufficient fund to finish it. I want everyone here to be a steward of what God has given to them. I want the developers to manage the resources they have and build something that fits their budget so that they can claim, as they have stated, that it would benefit their investors. And I want the town to guard their stewardship as well to the resources that it has been given. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jay Fear, rural Donnelley. Years ago, when TIF funds were used for the city of Morris, it seemed to me it always had to be used for infrastructure, for putting in the pipes, putting in the parking lot, putting in the curbing. I don't believe any, maybe things have changed legally because it's been probably thirty years since I've been involved, but at that time, I didn't, I think the money had to be keynoted only for the public infrastructure part and not for any of the building of the structure of the building itself. But I could be wrong. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
We'll let, Jay, we'll let, we'll let Nick and Samuel speak to all the questions at one time. That's probably the best way to handle this. Anybody else like to speak to the public during the public hearing portion here?
Can you give your last name for Samuel?
Sorry, Samuel, can you say your last name?
Me, Versi.
I'm Jay, not Samuel.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Who is it looking at? I don't know.
Okay, before I call Nick back up to field those questions, is there anybody else that would like to present any concerns or comments? Hearing none. Nick, I guess if you would like to come up and maybe address some of the questions and thoughts that were presented, maybe hopefully clear a couple of things up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and members of the public. I was jotting notes down, so I apologize if I didn't get everything. One of the questions that came up was transparency or why does this document, the TIF plan that is being brought forward for approval differ from the number I quoted in the analysis of the developer's pro forma? The TIF plan is supposed to be a living regulatory document that's supposed to forecast the potential tax increment that could be created from this property for a span of twenty-six years. So in order to do that, we actually assumed that the property would appreciate in value over time. And so we applied a two percent inflationary factor on the value of the property. And so at the end of year twenty-six, if that were to come true, again, just an assumption, it would rise to the level of one hundred and twenty-six thousand in potential revenue and capture. But what is it today? It's seventy-six thousand dollars based on the assessor's estimate of five and a half million in value. So that's just one reason. Again, the document, we have to provide an analysis for what the potential tool would be. We also have to say what it's going to be used for, which is to assist in the development of affordable housing on this site. Yes, the majority of TIF expenditures and the reason why you would use TIF to help assist projects in not just a historical sense, but even in any other sense, is to provide some form of offsetting infrastructure needs, demolition costs and things that might be challenging for a particular site. But when you're actually using a housing TIF district, any expense to actually construct the twenty percent of the units that are going to be affordable is a qualifying expense. Now, I'm not saying that there's not over nine hundred thousand dollars worth of site costs, parking expense, building, parking lot, building enclosed parking, utility line, all of those things that would still be in those other agreements, those are in this project. But from a statutory standpoint, as long as we can point to the fact that it's delivering and developing affordable housing units, any of those expenses would technically qualify under the statute. And so we're much lower than that potential cost because if you do just a basic, a ten million dollar project, that would mean two million of the expenses could be attributable to those twenty percent of the units. So we're lower than half of that. But there are other site costs that are going on. There is a substantial amount of parking, enclosed parking, that is a real cost on this development that the TIF will be helping to pay for. There was mention of some kind of a radio report on the use of TIF. There is a quite prominent and known abuse of tax increment within the city of Chicago. The city of Chicago is not in the state of Minnesota. It operates under a different set of laws. There's a different set of regulations that enforce what you can and cannot do with tax increment financing in the state of Illinois as opposed to the state of Minnesota. Certainly, we would echo all of those claims in the report. I think that's definitely things to be considerate of and make sure that you're not doing those things. But we do operate in a much different system. It is used in a much different way and there will be no upfront funding being provided for this. There will be no kicking in of any tax dollars that are taking away of tax dollars from any of your other funding sources. Again, as I mentioned, the property doesn't contribute very much right now and it will continue to at least contribute that amount for the life of the TIF district. So it's not going to hurt you from a financial standpoint. It'll actually help offset some of the tax burden to the school taxpayers, but that is a very small relative amount. What would really be a benefit is when this project actually gets built, provides a useful public amenity to the city in the fact that it's providing new housing options. And when it successfully pays off this obligation, then we're going to be able to terminate the TIF district and now we've got, you know, almost a two percent growth in our tax base just from this one project. It's actually one point seven percent if you're going to be precise, but it's, you know, if it appreciates over time, it's probably going to be closer to that two percent. So I just wanted to address some of those things. Accountability, there will, the agreement that is provided for this proceeding is the agreement between the city of Morris and the developer. Again, requires that they need to actually construct and build the housing. They need to actually prove out their expenses for all of those different items to actually prove that this is really a ten point three million dollar project and that that financial gap that we're analyzing right now is not only real, but they're using it in a prudent way to be able to build on this housing. Only when they actually prove out those costs will we actually give them the note signed by the city and reimburse them for the costs to develop this property. Again, that note will be up to nine hundred thousand dollars. That's a fixed amount, but it could come down if the cost to develop the property comes down. So there is some accountability that they're actually, you know, they're budgeting appropriately and then they're actually going to spend the money and develop the property in the way that they said they would and that the financial gap is real. We also put some constraints on, you know, if there's extra financing that becomes available, we can offset that. We don't anticipate that there would be some grants available for this project, but if we were able to find an alternative, there is some flexibility to apply that in lieu of the TIF note. But all expectations are that the city and its lone contribution to this project would be this passive financing through the pay-as-you-go TIF note. Again, after they prove out that they've developed the property and then on an annual basis, they need to continue to show the roles of the renters and show that they're still abiding by those affordability requirements or otherwise they don't get their payment for that year. I just hope that lends a sense to the level of accountability that will be put in place and the legal agreements.
Can you speak to how the fore analysis is done?
So you're absolutely right that the but-for test in statute just says that the council needs to make a finding that, you know, using reasonable information, that it believes that this project wouldn't come forward without some form of financial assistance. And so in order to meet that finding, we actually met with the council, not the EDA, back in June and we went over the full pro forma of the project, the ten point three million dollar budget, discussed, you know, what are some potential options to help, you know, finance this, the use of TIF, how it could be applied. And the determination from that meeting is looking at that budget, you know, and again, I know I was using percentages and there's nothing up on the screen that we can point to, but I'd be happy to talk to anybody after this meeting. You know, we have analyzed their budgets. We have analyzed the potential rents that would be charged, what this property would generate in terms of revenue, what it would pay out in operating expenses every year. We've compared that to what they should be able to leverage as a mortgage to finance this project using kind of standard underwriting criteria that banks impose. And we've compared that mortgage level and the level of equity investment without TIF to what it would be with TIF and determined that without TIF, just the level of investment to put four million dollars into a project like this for very little return, returns that were somewhere in the three to four percent range, it just would not be feasible in this marketplace. You can go out and buy a U.S. Treasury for about four to five percent, which is generally considered a very safe investment that would eclipse the level of return on this project. So it's not feasible. It's not a worthwhile investment unless we're able to offset that level of equity. We don't want to kick in money upfront from the city to develop this, but every city has an opportunity to try to attract investment in their community. The city is a participant in the marketplace. And so a city can choose through EDA authorities, through city council authorities, to contribute funding to help bring forward infrastructure improvements, real estate development, economic development in the way that it sees fit. And so we just, you know, discussed with the council and thought that the use of a passive pay-as-you-go TIF financing, again, they need to do everything, develop it, operate this business successfully, but assuming that they do that and they meet out their cost requirements, then the city will make available this resource to help, you know, finance it from the get-go. I hope that addresses the questions. I'm certainly can stand for others as they come forward from the council.
If you're here, it's up to you if you wish to allow any questions or not. It's up to you if you wish to allow further questions or not.
It's up to me. I think what we'll do is I'll allow just a couple of quick segue questions and then we will close the public hearing. So if there's anybody that would like to ask additional questions, please come up to the mic and then we'll bring it back to the council and we will vote. We'll let, Annette went first.
So say your name one more time.
Nick Anna.
Nick, Nick, two questions. I'm hearing the number nine hundred thousand dollars. Is that what you're looking for from the town? Is that correct?
That's what we're trying to fill as a gap in this project.
Okay. So my second question is, if the council members here became investors and they got together, nine hundred thousand dollars, would you not need the town? If they became the investors themselves and they gave from their own money, nine hundred thousand dollars, would you not need to use, like mine does, maybe their money, if they were willing to do that?
I don't think that a question is appropriate in this circumstance, Annette.
Okay, I'll take it back, but I'm just looking for, if you're just looking for an actual investment.
Yeah, I will answer afterwards.
Two quick questions. First of all, related to that question, EDAs have a lot of financing options available to them. If you read through the EDA Act, there's a lot of different things you can do to finance this project. TIF is only one of them. There's probably a dozen different ways to finance it. So that's, there are alternatives. And the question is, would you be willing to consider those? And then secondly, just, this is a completely different issue. The issue with this project, we heard mention of underground parking. Those of us who know this town, the history and know the history of that site, know a school sat there for decades totally without access to it because it was such a toxic building. So we see that in this community as an example of what happens on that site if a building is built, designed incorrectly and maintained poorly. It becomes a toxic mess and a pain for the community. In my perspective, the underground parking is inviting the same problem again because of the very thing we've experienced in recent weeks with heavy rainfall and water intrusion, that we stand a good chance of that underground parking becoming a major problem in terms of a health issue for the building that could destroy the usefulness of the whole building. So that's also a major issue.
If you would like to speak to that, sure, Samuel.
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, this year, we've all experienced what it's like to have a rainy summer and completely understand the concerns. And we actually managed a handful of buildings built in the eighties that are garden rise that have part of the first level below. And we actually managed a handful of buildings built in the eighties that are garden rise that have part of the first level below. And we have had more water in apartments than I care to deal with than I've ever dealt with. And so completely understand the concern. Construction and design standards have dramatically changed. And so we actually have to do what we call waterproofing. It's actually the terminology used and it's putting a rubber membrane all the way around that underground. So the, the actual standard is even if there was water sitting against that building, it would not be able to get in the underground parking. Additionally, there's none of the other toxins that would have been traditionally used as asbestos or those other things. And it is literally just concrete. Then there's a layer of insulation and then there's the waterproofing. And so you don't really have the opportunity to have something that could create the toxins in there. Additionally, there's full ventilation systems that go through there and in, in less than five minutes, we can completely replace all the air in the entire underground parking. And for those types of reasons, we're getting ahead of any risks of, of mold or toxins or of anything else that can grow there. I think it's a very valid concern, but, but I do think we've, we've built a similar underground parking in over a dozen other buildings around the state and have not had an issue in any of those buildings with those types of concerns. And so I do think we're trying to get ahead of that pretty aggressively. Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel.
Did you want someone to speak to the funding considerations?
Okay.
Did you want?
I thought you addressed the funding considerations pretty well. I don't see the need. Okay, I think what we'll do at this point is I'm going to close the public hearing and then I'm going to bring it back to the city council and we'll open it up for discussion with the council. And then of course, at the close of our questions and comment period, we'll take action on the resolution before us. In no particular order, just you have questions, now is a good time.
I don't, I don't see that I have any questions. I think that they were, everything was answered very well by you guys. Thank you very much for your information. I see that we have a property that pays little in taxes. We're not receiving that money now. So you're, by, by giving the TIF or, or doing the tax increment there, we're not giving our money to them. It's money that we wouldn't have had if this project is not being done. We're not cutting out the school. The school's going to get money. It's going to take away and lessen the burden to the taxpayers that are paying for our school, paying for our kids to have a better school to go to, better housing in town. I think we can, we can go around town and, and know that we, we need housing. This town needs housing. I think that people that come forward and companies that want to build in this town, I'm all for it. I think that we need to encourage that because we, we have plenty of jobs in this town and we need housing severely. We have a lot of great businesses that people come to this town from all over, all other towns and it'd be really nice to have places here for them. So I think it's a great idea.
Adding to that, it's not going to be any investment by taxpayers or the city to get this project up and running. It's going to be a zero dollar investment. The only funding that'll get paid back on the TIF will be the tax that's generated off of the new property, which will return to the investors over the 25 or 26 years. And when that's done, that tax will come to the city, the school and the county. So I think it's a win. We need housing.
I've heard this TIF presentation a couple of times because we have properties that have utilized TIF already and I think this was probably the most like lightbulbing going off, like, okay, this is, I get it. It makes a lot of sense to me. So for people who are hearing it the first time, it sounds kind of scary and sounds like, what, what's going on? We're not getting all these tax dollars. But the thing is, we're not getting them if this doesn't happen. This is one way the city can incentivize developers to come in and utilize land we've had sitting there for years and years that's doing, that is not going anywhere and that's what it was plotted for and that it's for development and we all know we need housing development. This property, this development sounds like it's going to have a lot of nice amenities that people who are working want in their apartment. And some of, and obviously East Point, so that's full for those same reasons. So I think we need the housing, we need, needed to be a lot of amenities in there, which it's going to have. The city is not losing money off of this and we're not putting out money. We're not saying, here's $900,000 or $10 million for you to build. It's, it's not doing that. It's, it's, it's just creating this district that utilizes the funding source that's already there. So I, I guess I, I see the need for it, for new housing. I don't see people plowing down our doors, building around here, multi-family housing and I see a huge need. So, and, and speaking of that, when Samuel talked about garden level apartments flooding, we have a lot of those in Morris and most everyone flooded. And that's a lot of people that are now sitting there living either in a flooded apartment or have nowhere to go. And so buildings that we can build newer that are going to put apartments above the ground are super helpful. So if you haven't driven around town to see those garden level, drive around and see how much junk is sitting out there and realize that all of those people in there are living in water-filled basements or were at one time. They might not be water-filled now, but it's not ideal and we have several complexes in our city that have that. So I'm all for this TIF.
I think the biggest thing, and council member Miller hit it on the head, right? This is, this is money generated from this specific entity. Tax money generated from this specific entity that is going into this TIF district.
Exactly.
And is being paid out for that.
Of the taxes generated are what's used to pay back the TIF payments over the life of the TIF agreement.
Correct.
And if, as we were told, if they're not met and we don't get the taxes, we don't pay out nothing.
Correct.
Our obligation is zero if they don't comply with everything over the full term of the agreement.
Well, I, are you done with that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I guess I, I guess I have a few, I'll start with just a few observations. And, you know, as you look around, this is probably my third go-around with TIF. I've been involved and this will be my third one now. And, you know, if you look around our community, Willy Supervalle at one time was created, that was a TIF district, right? We all shop and we all participate and we buy and we support our local grocery store. And I, I had a conversation with Paul Martin over the years and he said, but, you know, in his particular instance, without that TIF, he may not have been able to expand and do, make the improvements he wanted to, for his building. We all know that the whole development out there where Grips Motors is, that was a TIF district that was created. So you look at, you know, had that, had we not worked with Mr. Grips and worked with him on a TIF, all those things you see out there right now probably wouldn't be there. East Point is another one that we were, that we were, I was directly involved in also. So as you look around our community, TIF has certainly proven to be an effective tool for us as a city. And I think we should all be very, very thankful that we have people looking at our community and want to invest in our community. And, and I appreciate, you know, Samuel and your organization for taking a look at Morris because nobody forced you to come here. You chose to take a look at us and for that, I appreciate that. I do have a couple of quick questions and maybe perhaps one of you two could speak to this. Has anybody conducted a land density for the proposed development? We know that, you know, land density is calculated by, you know, dividing the population of that development by the total of that land area. And the reason why I'm asking that question is, you know, your unit, the proposed unit is going to be 60 units or so. And we just heard about a month or two ago from HRA, they're planning another 48 occupancy, you know, housing project. So I just think if we, it's worth probably just at least just asking the question. I mean, we, we don't want to overpopulate that area. So can either one of you speak to that?
Yeah, we, we obviously take that into consideration. Originally, from a cost-effective standpoint, developing, we wanted to go four stories because we thought it would be a little bit more cost-effective on this site. You kind of, when you're putting a foundation like an underground parking, once we build that foundation, we can go four stories or three. That foundation is a third of our cost for the building and it, there is no additional foundation cost for that extra story. And so most of our projects around the state are four stories. The reason we went three stories was, there's two reasons. One, when we were doing density calculations for the neighborhood, we felt that 60-unit count was a better fit for that area. And keep in mind, that's actually the whole, oh, is it, I, I, my, my avenues are wrong. Is it Eighth Avenue on the one side? Fifth and Seventh. Well, Eighth would be one over. It's close. So like it's all the way from Fifth to Seventh. It's that whole end that the building will occupy there. And so when you actually break it down, we, we feel like we could have potentially, we're actually, there's still a section where we could discuss a future building in years. And I think when you discuss that future building, the unit density counts would, would make more sense. But we went three stories because we felt 60 was a really comfortable total. When we look at what HRA is potentially proposing and what they've requested from the state, they're actually, from what we'd see statewide, they're really low density for multifamily on the amount of the three acres that they have there. They're coming in at less than 15 units an acre for that land, which, which isn't bad at all. And I think that the other reason is just the height in the neighborhood. Three stories seems to fit a lot better because of the amount of single family in that neighborhood. So it's both those. But yes, when we come look at a property, we, I mean, we have staff that are very trained in this and have, and have done this a lot. We've done developments like down in Oatana, we did a development that was the equivalent of 35 units an acre. We partnered on a development in St. Paul that was 180 units an acre. We're going to be like, I want to stay right around 20 units an acre for this in a relatively urban area. That, that's a pretty reasonable number from what we would see. If that answers your question, Mr. Mayor.
That does answer my question. Thank you, Samuel. Okay, and then let's see, what else do I have? Oh, just the last thing. The length of the term of this TIF. Why am I not knowing what that is?
Twenty-six.
Sure.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years? Okay, somehow I might have missed that. It can be decertified early. Is that right, Nick? What's your experience with the decertification of these TIF districts? Have you ever seen them go early? I mean, is that?
Mr. Mayor, a question about decertifying early. So the obligation in the agreement, right? So that's, there's a negotiated agreement between the developer and the city is that you'd be able to provide this tool to pay down that $900,000 TIF note. Once that is paid off, if it happens early, then the city can, would have no more use for the TIF district and can decertify it. It can go no further than 26 years. That's the maximum that's allowed. So if, if it only pays off 400,000 of it at year 26, then the developer needs to find another way to, to fund $500,000 to pay off their outstanding loan balances and things. They essentially would use other things to be able to fill that void. But there's no obligation from the city to, to make up that full amount. Getting to where you're going, it very well likely will pay off early. Really depends on the timing of, you know, so we're envisioning that they're going to get in the ground, they're going to build this and it's going to be complete potentially as soon as the end of next year. It might, it might take another year, you know, again, circumstances, weather, all, all sorts of factors that are, that can happen. But assuming it happens on schedule, you're going to start generating that revenue sooner that can pay down the note over time. And if we even just use the assumptions that, you know, was alluded to, that the value in the plan shows a higher amount, if that would have come through, this thing would pay off in about 17 years instead of the full 26. Now, there's no controlling what happens in the marketplace and inflation and all sorts of factors in the future. So I don't want to promise anything. The agreement before you is that you're going to make this tool available
Right.
for the life of the TIF district or paying off the note early, whichever happens first.
I was just a little unclear on how the decertification part of it went, so thank you. You did clear that up.
But the maximum dollar amount would be the 900,000 up to that. If the project gets completed less than that, that would be the dollar amount, correct?
I think there's two things there. So if, if the project gets completed, right now, we're assuming a $10.3 million budget for that project. If that project comes in at $9 million, there, there is a mechanism to lower the amount of TIF assistance.
And potentially interest, which will adjust.
Which means you're not even committing to 900,000. You're committing to a, a smaller amount, whatever, based on the, the change in actual cost.
Those are a couple of variables that we could have.
And when that, when that note gets issued, it's going to have a face value to it. Right now, it's up to $900,000 based on the budget for the project. That note, that face value will not change. So once that note gets issued after completion of the project and they prove out that they spent the nine, or the $10.3 million that they budgeted for, it's really dependent on the tax generation at, at that point for how fast that's going to get paid down.
Right, thank you.
And, you know, if we just assume some basic appreciation, just 2% per year on the valuation, it would likely pay down in about 17 years. If it stays flat and doesn't change in value at all for the 26 years, it'll pay off right in year 26.
That'd be nice, one that if it paid off early.
And, oh, you did ask my sense of whether it actually happens in the grand scheme of things. We're actually seeing it quite a bit right now. There, there are booms and busts in the development cycle, things, you know, eras where lots of construction is happening, lots of developments and then eras when there's less. We've seen in the last couple of years, again, we're talking a tool that's used for 20-some years in many cases. Projects that were built 20-some years ago are now coming forward and yes, because valuations have grown so much, housing has gotten more expensive, it's more valuable. Many of these TIF obligations have paid off early. Not all. In some cases, there are, there are some that, that don't perform to that level. A lot of factors, again, outside of our control. But again, that's why we don't want to commit to actually spending your existing reserves or your existing levies to put them at risk in this project because, you know, there really is no guarantee what's going to happen with the value of this property. We're not going to, we're not going to own it. And so it's all on the developer to, you know, they're incentivized quite, quite a bit because they want to have that balance paid off as well. And so there, every incentive to go ahead and operate a, a high-class facility, make sure that it's occupied because that will also drive the valuation and, and paying taxes, quite frankly.
Well, thanks, Nick. I appreciate it. Any other discussion for members of the council?
Well, I think that Nick and Samuel expressed all the answers that we needed, that I needed to hear on this project. So I will move on this resolution approving a modification to the development program and project plan for Morse Economic Development Project, establishing TIF District Number 17 within Morse Economic Development Project, adopting the TIF plan, therefore concurring in the approval of a development agreement and approving the elimination of two parcels from TIF District Number 15 within the Morse Economic Development Project.
Good job.
That is a multiple.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution approving the modification to the development program of the project plan for the Morse Economic Development Project. I will ask for a roll call vote, please, Carolina, on that resolution.
Councilmember Soldi?
Yes.
Correll?
Yes.
Bowdoin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Maynor-Walton?
Yes. Okay, we shall move on to reading and approval of our regular meeting minutes from Okay, we shall move on to reading and approval of our regular meeting minutes from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I will move approval of the regular minutes of our meeting from July twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve our regular meeting minutes from July twenty-second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we have the condensed version of those minutes from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I'll move approval of the condensed minutes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve our condensed version of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, next up is our consent agenda, which tonight consists of the audit of city bills, gambling reports, our raffle license report, construction report, and cost estimate twenty twenty-three G A apron reconstruction and expansion of the Morris Municipal Airport. And I guess I will move approval of the items on our consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will just bring it back to the council for any comments, questions. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve those items on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Petitions, requests, and communications. The first petition before us is the Chrissy Lake Dam. I guess I would maybe ask, Becca, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, we have a few people here. Sophia and then Ted on the computer.
So whether they're going to join us via Zoom or whatever we call that, virtually.
Yep.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Chief Eriari.
Yes.
Yes, so this is a Ted group that used to be here. Last time I checked, it's early, I believe it was January tenth, six months. We've had several public meetings. I just wanted to update the, the city council and before the public has gone. As of that January tenth meeting, I think the first thing I presented was some, you know, options that the, that the steering committee didn't look at. Since then, we've held two public meetings, one on March sixth and one on May sixth. That first public meeting, we got a client who'd be back in the public, and there were some other concerns, what they'd like to see. So those concerns were, obviously, having a foot lower in that pool elevation, they'd have a smaller pool area up to Columbia Highway ten. Then, then some other concerns too were just long homeowners, long beds, riverbed drive, not having access to the, the water. So some of the design changes that we made since that meeting, as well as some areas further upstream where it was doing the early travel, we decided that doing a little dredging or channel shaping behind that riverbed drive created a good channel that's actually going to be deeper than what's out there today that connects to that larger pool. And then that larger pool area, we also do some excavation or dredging to create some more depth there and then use some of that material to essentially construct a two-stage channel going further upstream. This is something that's still in the works. We've been coordinating with the D N R on some of the channel design. Some of the criteria we've been looking at is certain flows for what we call a bay pool event. It's usually around a one and a half year runoff event. And during that time, it's pretty common for a lot of channels to have water to break out, flow overland. So more part of this design, we designed that west side, kind of opposite of the campground to be able to utilize some of that floodplain during that bay play there. And then, one other concern too that a lot of residents have was that we ended up adding fill in these areas that would be kind of lower side ground. So trying to alleviate some of those concerns, we built up the ground adjacent to the campground. So it would be at least two feet in elevation above what the normal pool elevation would be. And then that would also slope up a little bit more to tie the existing campground ground elevation to eighty-two. So that, that eighty-two elevation is about three feet higher than what the proposed normal pool elevation would be after the rocker trappists are constructed. Also looking at the, the rocker trappists themselves, if you zoom in on a couple of those plan sheets, these again are, are still in the works. This is essentially what the upper rocker trappist would look like. Right now, we have, it's almost a few, uh, concave arches. Those would be boulder gears. And typically, for kind of wider rocker trappists of like this nature, we would typically have it kind of the gear at the very upstream and the very downstream connecting between. They would be a little more sinuous when they go back and forth. Then we extract pools in between those, but this is still kind of the, the first concept of it. This crest for the upper rocker trappists would be at elevation ten seventy-eight. I mean, that would basically have a normal pool depth of ten seventy-nine upstream on Columbia Highway ten. The, the normal pool depth upstream on Columbia, Columbia ten right now is about ten eighty. So that pool would be a foot lower than mentioned, but again, we're excavating a deeper pool area upstream to, to make up for that. So that, that depth is going to be closer to five feet where right now, today, that area is three and a half feet or further upstream. So that area is pretty shallow. It's only two or even less than a foot in depth. So that's what the upper rocker trappist is looking like. Then if you go further downstream, part of those conversations too in the public, a lot, a lot of the public wanted to see that lower rocker trappist move. I think they'd originally shown it as more of in the middle of the, the dam, the basement, which would be further west from where the existing dam is. A lot of, a lot of the public really wanted to have that lower rocker trappist move to where the existing dam is. So a couple of things with that. One is it's a lot closer, so access, you know, you have the dog park here. There's just this part of the area, so the public would have a lot closer access to get to that lower rocker trappist. Another thing that we had also looked at was adjusting it so that the rocker trappist would essentially start just a little downstream of the existing dam and then work its way upstream. This, this will help us stay out that landowners to the south. We, we've reached out to those landowners. That's difficult to get in full, I believe there are some elderly ladies in the area. But by doing this design, it will actually stay out of the area, so that won't be an impact there. And let's see. Looking at the upstream area, the channel restoration, we did have some burial upgrades from, oh gosh, I think it was maybe the nineteen forty's or right, right before the, the dam was constructed, where we were able to see kind of approximately where that previous channel would have aligned. And, you know, after the D N Rs out there, they did the, both the pituitary, basically the, the body of the Chrissy Lake. There wasn't really any evidence where that channel was because it all had filled in seven over time. So that's how this alignment has been determined. And then I guess I would just, you know, moving forward, I haven't asked the, the city council has any questions, but I know we talked with some other members of the steering committee. I guess the, the project right now where we're at, we're, we're looking for, you know, the city council to maybe provide some kind of official support, whether that be a motion or a vote or, or a letter of support for the project. Because a lot of the project will be constructed on the city of Morris property. So we're just looking for, you know, some support and regard. I guess at this time, I just open, open the floor for any questions from the city council or if there's, I have a couple of D N R personnel online as well. If they have any comments they would like to mention at this time.
Is there another date for a public information or public questions on where we're at now, like we've done previously?
So there is no additional public meeting on the, on the schedule right now. I feel like after the last public meeting, we were pretty aligned with a lot of the main concerns and, and questions. And the design moving forward, we're, we're looking to get some consensus, I guess, from the city council that they're wanting to move forward with the project.
Rebecca, are you on the steering committee?
Yeah.
Can you speak to?
It's hard to tell with those pictures what's changed.
So the big thing that changed from the last time, it was, they brought it here the, the last time they were here. So behind, you know, on, is it the north side?
In north.
That is going to be excavated out, so it's going to be deeper than it is now. They're going to build up around, up by the campground. The, the big area of concern was with some citi, the citizens that live behind there. And so all that water with them excavating out will stay. So that was, that was a big concern in, with people that live over there. So that'll all stay.
And the campground, how much water will lose from that lake? How many from the edge now where it is? How much water will be lost there? How many?
You want me to come up with?
Sure.
Matt Solms, I'm the district administrator, Steven Solms, something like that, we also have the chair. We did have two public meetings. I did see Mayor Rollers there for part of the two public meetings. I'm not sure if I saw anybody else at the, the public meetings. The first one, we wanted to be transparent, so they came up with the designs, I think, that you saw previously that, you know, looked channellized, had all the public input, kind of took all that public input, they came back with this. So, you know, there was some concern about lowering water levels, so the water level is going to be lower. But right now, if you go out there, it's about twelve to eighteen inches. There was actually a big old flooding bog like two weeks ago with all the rain that plugged up the culverts that just was all cattail. So it's channelization, I mean, it's real deceiving. It looks like a creek right now. It's going to be probably seven foot wide. It'll be a riverbed. That'll be like, I think Eric said, you know, five to seven feet deep. So right now, you know, the dam is here. Every day you have people fishing down below that dam. I mean, it's poor access. It's, we put a lot of money into it before. This project is completed, you'll have fishing access at the dam, a fishing access over here. You'll fish all along here right now. Where the campground is, nobody accesses the river from that campground. There's no good access. I mean, you couldn't probably walk across there. So there'll be a lot of opportunity there. If we don't do anything, you're going to end up with that filling in. I mean, you're at eighteen inches now, a lot of it. In ten years, you're going to be even shallower if seven fills in. So the whole point, I guess, is to take it under control this way, excavate that out. These green areas here will be upland areas. I mean, it's a floodplain. I've lived here twenty-five years. I've never really seen it flood down there. I mean, it just, it's not built that way. It's aesthetically pleasing right now. Driving down highway, you look over and it looks like this really nice lake, but I mean, it's just this narrow thing. So excavating it out, we can control what these areas are going to be now doing it this way. And we can build them up. We can see them down to native vegetation, to grass. Not saying you might get some water on them if you get a ten-inch rain, but if you wait, you're going to end up with this. But you're not going to have a five-foot-deep channel. You're going to have an eighteen-inch channel. And you're going to have, what all these homeowners were worried about is a bog. I mean, these areas are going to be wetland inaccessible. You know, if we do it this way, we can control how these turn out and then have fishable. And then the landowners back here, I mean, it's going to be better than it ever was before. They have access now, right? They'll walk to the launch base off of that. I mean, they can have canoe, and there will also be canoe and kayak accesses along the way. Yeah, I mean, and it's much safer. Right now, we have a dam that's failing. It's been disrepair for quite a while. You know, these rocks, they've done thousands of these projects. I mean, Houston Engineering has probably done the engineering for ninety-five percent of, maybe all of them. And the best part is a hundred percent grant funded. It costs the citizens of the county zero dollars. You wait, and if you went with option one and didn't do any of the dredging, you're going to come back and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars getting out that sediment. So that's kind of where this is. And I thought personally with a lot of these folks that live right on this area and they're pretty happy with this model because it doesn't affect, and actually improves their access and it still leaves some of that aesthetics here. You know, you have some pools, so you'll have some area that looks like open water.
So that'll be dredged or roughly, how deep will it be back up into the northwest, into that bay?
Yeah, this will be, I think, I didn't quote me in front of him, but it's, it'll be several feet deep, you know, three to plus.
Three to five.
It's not very deep. I mean, it's pretty plugged up. You can access it, but yeah, so it'll have dredging access.
Thank you.
Because it's kind of backwater and all the water from the fire haul down kind of comes across and ends up there anyway, so.
Yeah, and Matt, like Matt said, I, I was at all the public hearings and I guess I'd just like to say thank you for responding really to the citizens of Morris as they presented their concerns. And I think I feel really good about the finished product there.
Well, we wanted to be transparent because you know, if different projects come up, if people don't feel like they're included, then, I mean, if we want to take everybody's opinion in it, even if it is a zero cost, anybody is still going to make it an asset. So, yeah, I think it'll be an asset to the campground. It'll be an asset. I mean, just the fishing opportunities, you know, well, right now, you can literally fish right below the dam. After this, you can go all the way up the whole, whole way pretty much. So you can do it in kayak. It's continuity, it's fish patches, there's all kinds of things to time this besides the recreational.
Thanks, Matt.
Good, thanks, Matt.
Well, I guess what we could do is ask our city manager to draft a letter of support for this project if the council feels that way.
I would agree. I think that, you know, I think that was the, the main point for us is that the, the people living across there that were headed, are in agreeance with what they're doing here and, and that's important to me. And also I, I do see, especially, and it's not a small bog that's stuck at the bridge either. You're going to have this continue over and over. So I think that getting ahead of it here with this seems like a pretty decent plan to me.
I agree. We do nothing. It's going to be shallow. It's going to keep filling in. It's going to increase the usage of our campground area for people with a, a deeper river channel running through there instead of basically a swamp is what it is right now with the cattails and the muck. And I think the, the revisions that have been done and thankfully, they've listened and redone the locations to accommodate people, to make it more accessible for everybody. So I fully support the proposed change.
I guess my only question, and this is probably for you two and maybe our engineers on the line, is with the amount of runoff that we get, not only from, from town, but upstream, we're going to continue to get that. continue to get that sediment. And obviously we're dre- we're proposing the dredge, dredging that that channel. But what does that look like as far and I realize you probably can't estimate out, but what does that look like for refill and and rework in that area?
Well, sediment flows toward the healthy river system. The dam right now is
Correct.
So the rocker attractors will help move some of that here. Instead of getting stuck though. Go on down.
Propose propose the flow through.
Yep.
Yeah, that totally makes sense.
And now I may just add, as you mentioned, uh but for sure the you know the two-stage channel portion of this project, that should can be self-tensing and you know the channel's going to carry some sediment and that's going to move some sediment. So that should um should move sediment out of that flood plain that we've been constructing. You know, the portion of the Chrissy Lake that we've been dredging, you know, o- over a longer period of time, that more than likely would start to fill back in with sediment. But you know, right now what you have today is going to do that either way. So this will buy you you know more time. Also by lowering that runoff elevation by a foot, that's also going to help keep um that sediment from filling in as much. So you know certainly over time it it will slowly start to fill back in again. Um that kind of pool area of you know the two-stage channel portion upstream, that should be you know self- self-tensing I guess is how you put it.
Alright. Any other questions from the council? We need to put that in the form of a motion just to add, I'd just entertain a motion to have our city manager draft a letter of support for the Chrissy Lake Dam project.
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved.
I will second that.
So we have a motion and a second to have our city manager draft a letter of support for the Chrissy Lake Dam project. Uh I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh virtual friend. Alright, um.
You didn't write his name down, did you?
Forgot his name. Virtual friend. The force be with you, whatever. Uh next up, buyer fire call. Uh I'm going to ask my city, our city manager to speak to that one, please.
Yeah, so at the last council meeting, um the buyers were here um to ask um to not pay their fire call. So the fire call, um they stated in their nine-one-one call that they um asked not to have fire service there. Uh the fire department did respond. Um so they're, what's in question is their bill. If we want to take take their bill um or have them pay their bill. So that's you know what's in question.
In in that situation, did the fire, was the fire department obligated to respond?
The fire department was paged per the dispatch, yes. So.
You know, I listened to the the call and the first two words out were there's smoke bellowing and it smells like smoke. And so you can hear the dispatcher calling the fire department right away. And as the call progressed, yes, she did uh did say, I don't think we, smoke but not a fire. And the smoke alarm, I mean that was the, that was said. And then but they'd already been dispatched by the time. And I I just don't know if we can, well, I can empathize with them. I just don't, if the policy and the procedure is this is what happens, I don't as a city council want to be dictating what dispatch and fire department and the police department are doing. I mean that should be a separate discussion then on what you're doing. But as we have the fire chief in here, I just don't, that's not my call. They're the fire department. They're they're dispatched. They go through training. They they, I mean, like I said, when the first few words out of her mouth were there's smoke bellowing from the the um the room and it smells like smoke. And then yes, you can hear later on in the conversation, well, I don't think you need the fire department. But you can hear the dispatch dialing already and calling for them. So I don't, and again, I you know, I just don't think it was our call to dictate what what happens at dispatch and with law enforcement or the fire department.
And it's not up to the dispatcher to determine or call off. If they're called for help, it's up to the fire department to respond, which the chief did. There was a death at the facility where they were called to. And talking with the chief, when there's a death, you have a fire marshal responds from approximately an hour away drive time. And then by the time he gets ready, so by the time he gets here, if they do need some assistance for the fire marshal, I see where the department was on standby until they had all of that information. So I think we need to stick where we're at with our, what our standards are and leave it as it is. I think they did as they were supposed to. They responded. They were on standby instead of having twenty or twenty-five firemen meandering around the scene where there is a death and there's things going on. They were on standby at the fire hall if they were needed within a short response time if they were called for assistance to help with things. So I I think it needs to stay as is.
And we're very lucky to have the fire department we have. And you know, we know a fire is a fluid situation, you know, there's there's no two fires that are exactly alike. And you know, right now it looks like it may not be something, but wait a minute, it could change. So uh that's why we have our fire, our firemen all come and dispatched to be on the ready. So any other discussion on that?
I don't think we have to make any motion on that. We just we just decide to leave it as is, correct?
Correct.
Alright.
Alright, so we'll just leave it. Alright, so no further action needed on that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh we shall move on to our airport grants. And once again, I'll ask our city manager to speak to that.
Yeah, so our airport engineer um has been busy applying for grants. So we have received four state grants. Um so two are at a seventy state, thirty local share, um and the other two are sixty percent state and then forty percent local share. So um the grants that we receive funding for um are a twenty-twenty-six planning grant for the runway fourteen thirty-two clear zone acquisition plan. So um MINDOT clear zone policy requires all airports to own all land under the clear zone or request an exemption. So this project would request an exemption from the policy. So the project cost is ten thousand. Uh so local share is that thirty percent. Um the other thirty percent local share uh grant is a terminal area security fence and gate. So that project cost um is projected to be a hundred thousand dollars. And then the forty percent local shares are an FBO hangar door replacement, which that project cost is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and a Jet A fuel truck, which that project cost is a hundred and twenty thousand. So if the projects are done prior to the end of this year, we'll have to take um funds from some unallocated areas um for our portions. Otherwise, we'll look at budgeting them in next year's budget. Um if you uh make a motion to move forward with it, um we will be getting some state contracts from them for all four for grants that we'll have some resolutions for.
It's pretty impressive that we applied for four grants and got four grants. I mean that's we, so our new airport people are really working hard because that that's a lot of grants to be getting for an airport. And with that, I'll move on that resolution authorizing the advertising. Uh yep, nope, wrong one. Sorry.
It's just a motion to approve moving forward with them.
I'll make a motion moving forward to approve the grants, four grants we received for the airport.
I'll second that. Alright, we have a motion and a second to uh move forward with our airport grant application, right? Uh and once again, I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh we will shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. Uh the first resolution before us is a resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the Morris munip- municipal liquor store. And I guess, Becky, you wanted to shed a little bit of light on that one?
Yeah. So all the plans and specs are done for the liquor store project. So our next step is to advertise for um bids. So we are looking to advertise with the bid opening of Thursday, August twenty-eighth at two o'clock.
Exciting.
Yeah.
It just seems rather fast or basically what are we, the twelfth today to having sixteen days for when we're advertising or looking for bids? Can we get things or can potential bidders respond in that amount of time? Or do we have parties that are interested that are aware that we're building or to get a a number of bidders to do the project?
Yeah, I would think that that's enough time. I know Whitney's been working with them.
Yeah, Marie Dahl um is our kind of our contact, our construction manager. And they feel confident that we'll get a good competitive bid.
Okay. And funding for this will come from liquor store revenues. It's not like we're doing anything major for the whole community. It's proceeds and we've been setting aside money from our liquor store profits for anticipating this project coming along someday?
Yeah, so we'll start with um a a portion of it. The rest of it will bond for and then pay for the bond through revenue from the liquor store.
So it'll be self-supporting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alright, any other further discussion for our city manager on that resolution? I guess I'll, go ahead.
I will, I will move on to resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the Morris Municipal Liquor Store building.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh authorizing advertising for bids for the Morris Municipal Liquor Store. And once again, Carolina, I'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilwoman Miller?
Yes.
Collexon?
Yes.
Or else?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Mailbollard?
Yes. Alright. Last resolution before us is a resolution authorizing and supporting the collection and disposal of debris and garbage caused by the recent floodwaters. And once again, Beck, I'll just have you maybe highlight some things there.
Yeah, so with our recent flooding event that we had, um we are looking, we have started cleaning up um and offered the support to to clean out uh people who had basement issues and who had brought um needed help getting uh the removal of of the items in their basements. Um with that, we need a resolution in order to um ask for funds when we um if we get a declaration, a state declaration. So we'll get some of that um paid back. But this way um it's helping people to pick up their items um out of their basements.
And there's a few things that not, I'm.
Yes. It's going a little slower than than probably expected. Uh we have about four or five trucks out there. We have to separate things uh based on different items. Um so we don't have to do them at Inglebritson's. So it's taking a little longer. Um as we go through, the county has survey one, two, three, and we're um taking and putting down every spot that we're picking up, taking pictures. So taking a little time, but we're getting there.
Um is that something you want to let people know that they are coming around? Because I know I had a couple of questions about, yeah, when are they going to come and pick up? And I'm like, wow, I know they were starting Monday, but.
Yeah, I know. I think they put something on Facebook today.
Okay.
About about kind of that it's.
That they're still coming.
That they're coming.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah.
Okay.
Just taking a little bit. Mm-hmm.
So this is just limited to debris from the flood damage or I'm going to decide I'm going to clean up my backyards. We don't have issues. So the stuff is sitting out there. Are we going to pick up all of it or is it from?
We're not picking up branches and we're not picking up hazardous materials. Um we're not going through and going, was this something that was a flood issue or or just something you had in your garage and you're throwing out there? We're not, we're not examining that closely, but we, you know, we aren't picking up branches. We did let the public know today in our Facebook post. Um those were not in your home um.
Okay, just clarifying. So people set stuff out that it doesn't sit there for ages that, well, you said you were going to pick it up and now it's not picked up, but.
I will say, as we go down streets, we only are going once. We're not. So if people forget and then put it out later, we're, once we finish the street, we're not, we're not going back.
I'm going to move on that resolution authorizing and supporting the collection and disposal of debris and garbage caused by recent floodwaters.
I will second that. And to just add that we are able to get some reimbursement from the state on this, correct?
We have, we have a meeting on the twentieth. So yeah, we're hoping.
That meeting on the twentieth, what else is going to be discussed?
Well, pr- probably it's just, I think, the initial damage assessments.
Of the whole community?
Yep.
Okay.
For the whole county.
Alright.
Yep.
Because I know some people have indicated that they're, you know, have concerns about, you know, what we're doing as a city.
We're doing the best we can. We've got a lot of water in a short amount of time.
Very quickly.
Our system is um only able to do when normal rain. And this was a way above normal rain. Um so we're doing the best we can. Uh we have a, you know, six streets west is still underwater. We're pumping the best we can to try and mitigate those issues there. Um a lot of water that's still standing around town that only moves so fast.
Well, and I really want to give a shout out to our our guys. I mean, I I happened to come into town the night of that torrential downpour. And they were already out there pumping. And I know they worked very hard. And I I just want to give a shout out to them. I know some people may not feel that we did enough. But when you look at, given the circumstances of the the deluge that we experienced in a twenty-four hour period, basically, it's, it was really amazing to watch that water actually go down. And when you look at Green River and it was.
Underwater.
It was basically underwater. And to see that go, I mean, the system worked. It's just took a little longer. And I think that most people would have liked it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh authorizing and supporting the collection and disposal of debris and garbage caused by recent floodwaters. Uh I'll just ask for a voice vote on that also. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh and I guess we'll move on to our city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, so we'll start with junk. Um there was questions at the last meeting on five oh six West Eleventh um about the car that's sitting there. Um how how things work is uh we had given him a citation for that. It was moved. Everything was done. That was ended. He brought it back. So now things start again. So um.
Oh boy.
It's, it's, yeah. That's, so that's where that is. Um with all of the rain, we haven't done anything with that. Uh Russ has not been over there to um take pictures and cite him for that again. Um uh we did get an updated junk ordinance from uh our assistant city attorney. So I've looked through there, um having a couple staff look over it to see if there was anything um that were maybe missing or things that they see on a regular basis that maybe we want to include in it. Um so uh next meeting, we will bring it to council for the first first reading of that ordinance. Um law enforcement, so the committee that works with the law enforcement contract, we met on the twenty-ninth with the commissioners in the county. We took a tour of their facility. Um it was nice to see their space and the needs that we maybe wouldn't have thought of. Uh we saw um where they hold the inmates. We saw where their um evidence is collected and stored. Um learned that they have to keep things, uh some things forever if it was a murder trial. So even if someone passes away, they still have to keep the collection there. So um need for their space. Um I was reminded that we're not just paying for patrol hours, but hours to help us with different ordinance items. So um one of the items that was brought up uh was the junk enforcement. Uh we Uh, we had law enforcement there with us, um, for quite a while through that whole process. At five oh six West Eleventh, uh, they help us with the snow emergencies. And they also, since it's in our, um, our city, they do, um, all of the child protection investigations and stuff. And that's all included in our city time. So just wanted to, uh, share, share those things that, that were shared with us as, as we talk about that. Um, budgets, we're still working on our budgets. Uh, we will need to look at some dates. Um, end of August, uh, or September to have a budget work session. We can do that tonight or we can look at the next meeting. Um, but I wanted to throw it out there. So our budget, our preliminary levy and budget's due to the state September thirtieth. So at our second meeting in September, we'll have to have, um, an approval with that. So, um, we could look at beginning of September to, to meet and have a budget work session. Uh, we could do it the week before, the twenty-third. It's, um, kind of up to, up to your guys' schedules and what that looks like.
The twenty-third, that's our regular meeting day, too.
Right.
Correct.
Yep, so that's when it'll be, that's when we'll have to approve it, yep.
So we, you'd like to do it before that, obviously?
Yep.
So we can meet the sixteenth?
Well, I'll keep in mind that the Tuesday, that would be planning commission.
That's the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
But keep in mind, there's five Tuesdays in the month and historically, that fifth has been our work session.
So are you thinking of wanting to do a work session on the twenty-third and changing your meeting to the thirtieth?
Uh, in September.
Oh, what am I thinking?
I'd like to just leave our meetings, I think where it's at, for consistency. I think we can pick a, another day and I guess ideally Tuesday, but I would suggest either, you're saying the sixteenth you have issues.
Well, that's plan, that's planning commission.
We can, I have no objection to some other day during the week, I guess.
Could you Monday the fifteenth? I mean, Mondays are probably a good day.
Could make that work.
All right, you okay with Monday the fifteenth? The day before our council meeting?
No, we don't have a council meeting on the sixteenth.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Could be that Monday in between.
Yeah, 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 Monday between. What time do we have to stop? Seven-ten?
If you wanna, Lloyd, if you want it to be recorded, you'd have to re-roll the CD.
Well, it has to be recorded, doesn't it?
We have it on a voice recorder, so, I mean, if you want to, you can.
Yeah, that, Mayor, that works for me.
Okay. I think what we'll do is, uh, we'll just set that date and then we'll just take a break because we gotta reset the tape. And then we'll take a break, okay? For about five minutes. All right, so that's what we're gonna do, Monday the fifteenth. All right, let's take a break. Five minutes, we'll recess and reset the tape.